Good evening, everybody. It is 6:03 on July 26, 2018. Welcome to the Vader City Council Meeting. Tonight, we have some absences, but we do have a quorum. Roll call.
Judy Costello here. Jason Daley is excused.
Jason did contact City Hall today for an ex- to be excused.
Joe Shea.
Present.
Mike Parsons.
Mike Parsons did contact City Hall yesterday to be excused.
Leona Sonderhunter here. Ken Smith.
And Mayor Smith also asked to be excused. All right. We have a quorum. Move on to pledge allegiance. Judy, would you like to lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Mayor's Report. The only item on here was the update on the A Street project. They are on schedule and they are still within the grant budget. And you can expect to see paving next week. And then after that, there's just the odds and ends, like the lighting and the striping and seating and things like that.
So what is the end of the contract date, Joe, exactly? Do you know?
I don't have the, I don't have it here. They, they were expecting to still be done within the 45 days. Didn't they start on June 11?
June 11.
Yeah, so, so they're still doing all right. Yeah. All right. That's all I had for the, for the Mayor's Report. Yes?
May I ask if you could explain the gravel removal, the gravel back end, the gravel removal, the gravel back end?
So, they said that they ran into some, a patch of clay. That, so the road had, the road had been patched at some point with some clay. And they noticed it when they were driving over it with their heavy equipment. The road, the road kept sinking a little bit right there. And so, they ended up having to dig it all out, replacing it with gravel, repacking it down to get us a good, good, hard surface. So, that's, that's what you were seeing. But, like I said, it was all within the budget and TIV is covering everything, so.
That didn't put everything behind?
Nope. They're still within the window. Anything else? All right, Council Reports. I don't have anything at the moment.
I would like to share the citywide yard sale on August the 4th from 8 to 3 to 4 o'clock? Question mark. Currently, as of today, I have 19 residents signed up. So another good sale this year. And then, the community center will open on August the 6th at 10 o'clock. Hopefully after paving has been done and nothing but a few stripes or lighting and that kind of thing. So that should not be a problem for folks to get into the store.
Great. All right. The party?
Grand reopening.
Grand reopening?
Grand reopening.
Yes.
The Sandra Hunter project is almost done. It's almost completed.
So, so we won't have anything else to talk about in the community of what's...
What is she doing? What is she doing? It's almost complete.
All right. Agenda approval. Do we have any additions?
I make a motion to approve the agenda for 7/26/2018 as written.
We have a motion from Judy Costello to approve the agenda as written. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Leona Sander Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I make a motion to approve the State Council meeting minutes for July 12, 2018 as written.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Sander Hunter to re, to approve the minutes from July 12. Do we have a second?
I'm second.
Seconded by Ms. Costello. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Voucher approval. I had one concern with the vouchers. Sure the other council members have noticed that we're approving the vouchers for the Barcot payment before we actually approve the, the pay request. And I thought that was unusual. Jill said that if we want, we could do vouchers at the end. But since it all happens in the same meeting, it's all kind of inclusive and it's okay. So that was, that was my observation. But we could do it either way. Could approve them, approve them now or wait till the end.
Because it's number one on the...
It is number one.
I think it would be better if we waited until it's part of the topic.
Okay. Oh, you want to do vouchers? Just wait to do vouchers after city business?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we will wait to do vouchers until after city business. Special reports. We have none at the moment unless the Sheriff's Department had something they'd like to share. Impromptu? No? All right.
We don't have, did I miss the planning people and the park board again?
I know they, I think they did have a meeting.
Well, they both had meetings last week.
They had the meeting since our last council meeting.
Uh huh. And they normally, it was my understanding, that the special reports from those two committees or boards would be the last meeting of the month. I was wondering if you could make a note again that I have requested that someone come, please? Because we have a five-year plan. Last meeting, we had a $20,000 addition to give the more money to work on the plan. So what's the planning committee doing? I should like to know that, please.
All right. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, moving on to city business. Item number one. Council will consider Barcot construction pay request number one. This is for the work that they have completed thus far on the A Street project. It's 100% funded through a grant. Have any other commentaries on it? Okay.
I'm surprised that they're, they started June the 11th and here it is, the end of July that they did dis, you know, want dispersment sooner than this. That surprises me. They did no startup, no mobilization, no anything.
And you are absolutely sure that two cars are going to fit two? Absolutely sure.
You still have to pave them, Leona, whether two cars fit now or not though.
I mean, seriously?
There's two 10-foot lanes. Your vehicles are generally not more than 10 feet wide.
You put the mirrors out? I can imagine.
I guess it really depends on how much your mirrors protrude, I suppose.
It looks so small.
I, I think the comment is a one-way street is out there. I think that's what everybody is commenting that it is a one-way street.
It's not a one-way street.
Okay. All right. I will make a motion to approve Barcot's pay request of $181,708.45.
I think you just said 181.
I've got 181. Oh, this is the whole thing. I apologize.
We have a mo, a motion to approve Barcot construction pay request number one by Judy Costello. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Leona Sander Hunter. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving Barcot construction pay request number one? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Update on additional paving project. So, Barcot was not able, so we were originally talking about doing the other, the south section of A Street. Barcot wasn't able to include that for the price that we were interested in. And so, my question is, do we want to consider another, another vendor to do that? Or do we want to wait until we have construction on the sewer plant underway or near complete before we put new pavement down? My, my concern is if we, if we put new pavement down...
You're anticipating a lot of traffic.
Yeah. So do we want to wait? Do we just want to keep it nicely gravelled? Or do we want to try to do something with it?
Had not considered all the traffic for the sewer plant?
We might have to redo it again.
We do have a lot of gravel.
We have a lot of gravel.
Do the bids tend to be high right now for, for doing that project? Did that come in?
So, the, the couple of folks that checked it out, they want to rebuild it because it's, there's hardly any asphalt left at all on the edges of it. Quite, quite a bit of it as you get towards the end of the street. And so, a simple overlay, they're worried that it went last with commercial traffic. We've done overlays on a lot of other parts of town that look great years later, but they don't have the, the commercial, the commercial traffic we're going to expect going through there. So this is a consideration. It's a gamble, whether we do it or not.
I think I would say we wait and let the sewer plant traffic, maybe try to get in on something at that point, after that. When is the next grant coming up? Will we, will be 2020?
So the, so the next TIV grant requests are due the middle of August for the funding, the construction cycle of next year. I do have a little bit more on that, on that topic here in a second. But I'm not sure if that section of A would qualify for their arterial program, seeing as it's really not a, to be qualified, they have, they have two different road, road, um, road grants. They have one for main arterials, connectors between schools and highways and, and things like that. And then they have a preservation program for chip seals and things like that everywhere else. I'm not sure A would, this section of A would qualify for that. I'm going to ask, but I don't think it will. So we can, we can wait on, on that section then. I do have proposal in with Devon Jackson for a grant, for the grant proposal for the chip ceiling, chip ceiling work. We put one in last year for a few streets that we didn't get, but we did, of course, we did get this other one. And so we'll probably reuse that one. It includes sections of 8th out here going up the hill and another section of, I didn't bring it with me, I think another section of 10th on this side and Anna's as well, a portion that we do rightly own.
So, so starting in front of the little plane and going down?
Well, I think the, this is on the railroad, the railroad owns 150, 200 feet or something. And then it's ours all the way to the park. So it would be for that section. Hopefully at the next meeting, we'll have, we'll have that available on the night. And that's all I have on that.
Okay.
For now. Any other questions or items we should focus on? Okay. Number three, everyone's favorite subject, the limb disposal project. All right. So, I have the latest and greatest. They've been here all week. They say there are three, as of 3 o'clock today, they're three quarters of the way done with removing the brush. They've taken the excavator already. They're still brushed by the sewer plant and still have some brush along the road. They have about two loads left and the blocks are not yet in place. So that is the update.
Why, why did the excavator leave without the project completed?
I don't know. That is, that is the report from John.
From John? Who's in charge of watching the excavator go out of town?
I don't know. Do you know, have any other information on that?
I don't have any other information. It said that John came on Wednesday and said that they took the excavator away and that's all we know. I don't know more than that.
Who's in charge of deciding where the blocks are going to go? Do we know where we want our blocks?
Weren't they asking, they were asking about that. Where, Jill was telling me they were asking where, where we wanted the blocks. So, I'm not sure exactly if, if we've told them yet or not.
So were they paid for John before we got a job?
We had a, we had a comment?
Oh, yes.
Yes?
Who's charged with this project? Was it that Mr. Parsons who immediately got this man to come here? Who, of you five, or the mayor, or the city clerk, or somebody? Who was in charge of watching this? Now you've paid for this project and he's not done and he doesn't have the best example of work ethic that took him forever just to show up?
Well, I think your sentiment is the same as some of the council members were, were alluding to, is the fact that, that we're concerned that the excavator is gone before the job is done.
And I did not realize that, that John was Charles in charge. So that was, that was another question of...
He's not in charge. Jill asked him to give us a report of how things were going and that's all.
So I guess the question is, what do we want to do about the fact that it's gone? Do we want to contact them or just see where this goes?
Oh, I think we should contact them and tell them to load it right back up on the trailer.
Over the next few days?
Yes. Yes, tomorrow morning. Give him an email and say, no, 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 no. I think that's only fair, don't you? Yes, I do. Sorry.
Yep. Yeah, we've had bad luck with things like that before.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Another comment? Yes?
Is there a title on hand somewhere? Has it been signed over?
They don't normally come up titles here.
Or some kind of paperwork for ownership?
Bill's sale is usually all the excavators have. So it's...
Does he get our names?
Well, we don't know who's in charge. We need to find that out first.
So is the direction to either bring it, either complete the job completely tomorrow or bring it back if, if the job isn't done?
Well, I would think that would be...
Yeah.
Before the weekend, obviously.
Yeah.
Okay. Tammy, can you relay that to Jill so that can get done? Thank you.
Unfortunately, Jill is not here tomorrow.
Oh, she's training tomorrow as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
Are you filling in for her tomorrow in that capacity?
I have not been asked to fill in.
I guess I am filling in tomorrow in that capacity.
So, Mayor, pro Tim.
So, I will take that initiative then and get ahold of them. I have their contact information and talk to them directly.
Perfect. Wonderful. Thank you.
Hopefully we'll get taken care of tomorrow. Add that to my list.
Let's not drop the ball here, okay? Where do we stand on that chipper? I'm going to go into my little speech here. We, as city councilperson, are in charge of running a quarter of a million dollar business called the City Vader. And every business person knows that you have a Plan A, a Plan B, and a Plan C at least. We've gone through Plan A, which is to get Mr. Jags, or whatever his name is, to get rid of all of this. We are still sitting here with no Plan B of bringing all of those limbs we cut today off of Leona's tree. What are we going to do about that chipper? We've not talked about that and we've had all this time while Mr. Jags has been, you know?
Well, not just that, but I know there's been some talk about having a system in place where it's only open at certain times and, and it's staffed by a volunteer and we collect fees and we use that money to pay to run the chipper and all that, so.
So, none of us three then know what the plan is or have a plan?
We haven't made a plan.
Uh huh. Should we make a plan? I think we should make a plan.
I have made a couple calls to the Most County Waste garbage dump place, whatever it's called, to see if there's anybody there that could guide me in any kind of a direction to maybe get some grants or some funding of some sort, since we're trying to do this whole gold green thing, smaller footprint, collected, mulch it, and then sell the holes. Trying to do this whole cycle thing. And so far, I don't know who I'm talking to exactly, but they sound like I'm a total fool and idiot. Like, why would you call here for that? Well, wouldn't that be the place you would think, would know if there's any programs out there to do this?
Yeah, they do have quite a few outreach.
They teach classes instead, so I don't know if anybody has a, a name, some, someone specific I can talk to?
If there's an opening on that board and they're, that they have for all the communities that have a representative there, that you get all that stuff for us, if they were not there.
That's the presidency of the month and everyone conversation.
I don't know what his comment is, but he doesn't want to just have anybody on that board. Probably being with Judy.
Something going on, something going on.
The council member can't be on that board?
Yes, the council member can. Lois Wilson needs to be on that board. She's the last person that was on it. For some reason, Ken seems reluctant for anybody else to come there, so. Well, we could be getting all that stuff because Winlock sure got it.
Does it have to be...
Yeah.
Does it have to be approved by the mayor in order for a council member to do it?
Yes, that is understood.
He's announced that a few times at council meetings over the years.
And Lois evidently. And that's when I asked, I think it's been a couple meetings ago, I asked to sit on that board and then he told me that, that, no. There was no openings and whatever, but yet I've been told that there's a seat for Vader. I'm confused. I suppose we could go on a Wednesday and find out. You know, and back to your thought, somebody said Kathy Reed might be a reach-out and touch person too.
Is she, is she there?
She's Department of Ecology. Just kind of thinking, you know, the green that she might have up. If we reach out to that one lady that was here.
Yeah. Speaking of that lady, I did actually get ahold of her and she got, she called me back and did all the research and everything. And she said Vader does not qualify for any of their programs because our average income is $40,000 a year. So that disqualifies us from all of the programs that she could offer. So we're rich. We're rich.
So do you have a thought for the chipper?
We, other than trying that, going try, trying that one group, I'm not sure if it was USDA or something like that, maybe it wasn't the DA.
That was that, you mean the lady that was here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She was, wherever she was, yeah, we tried. That was our only, our only try so far. Unless we wanted to try to fund one ourselves or if we wanted to...
Well, it's the middle of the year. We could go through the budget and see if there's any money hanging out in some of those categories. I think I went through and found about $3,000 sitting around. Have you done that?
We've done that before in the past.
Yeah. Because it's the middle of the year. We still have money left in some account of line items that we could do, so.
Well, we do still have time. We can get it really moving. We do have time to get some mulch torn for next spring.
So how about, we as a council, reach out to our different little resources here and see if we can have a, a talk again at our next meeting?
Okay.
Come up with a plan and possibly who's going to man it, the volunteers, you know, what our fee schedule will be, how many dates a week, we, you know, weekends do we want it open or whatever?
Yeah, and I can, I can talk, talk to my contact with Solid Waste. I know, I know a manager up there and I can see what he says. Maybe he'll have a better contact than whoever you're, you're going through. Someone on the other...
It would be nice if I just go to someone.
Yes, someone on the other side of the office.
Who do I need to talk to?
So, so I'm assuming, Joe, that we're going to keep that thing locked up until we get this figured out?
It's probably best.
I, I think it would be, unfortunately.
So question? Nope, okay. All right? Anything on the, else on the limb disposal? No?
I'm glad they're moving on.
Yeah, they are moving on.
And it looks, and it looks good. I was just down there.
Yeah, I saw those trucks rolling through town. I know what that is.
Judy sent me a message. Truck of brush just went through.
Big truck.
All right. Update on code enforcement officer and building official. So the mayor has been trying to reach the official with Chehalis and he is not getting phone calls returned. So Jill has been directed tomorrow to personally go to that office after she's done with training to get in touch with him face-to-face. So, that's the only update I have on that.
I'm kind of confused. We don't need a code enforcement officer. I thought that was the mayor. Am I missing something here?
He doesn't want, he doesn't want to be...
Right. We're looking for someone outside of City Hall to do it. That way, that way...
Oh, I must have been asleep at the wheel. I thought we were just going for the building official and I thought he was going to continue to do that little, but we're looking for someone who...
It's possible. Uh huh. So we can give that responsibility away. That way, the mayor position can still be friendly with everyone in town as well as the city clerks can still be friendly.
Hey, alrighty. So we have reached out to Naperville, Castle Rock, Toledo, Winlock, all of everybody and their brother?
I don't have any other updates on that other than what happened, what we were told at the last council meeting. We had a comment from the...
So for the 10th time, why is he only looking at Chehalis? There's nothing special about those people. They don't fly. I mean, why, he doesn't even seem to want to call Naperville mayor. I mean, I've talked to some person in Naperville, they're the person that's sweeping the streets. He hasn't reached out to other people or other jurisdictions to really investigate whether or not they're interested in, in sharing this. And meanwhile, we're paying twice as much as other jurisdictions for the people that we have. Twice as much. We Naperville is $41 an hour and it's $80 an hour for the man that we have now. That's not fiscal responsibility. And I don't want this to fall into the black hole and, and just like the limbs, two years later, we're, oh, well, it's halfway done.
Like I said, they're, they're still trying to contact them. Chehalis was trying to get their new organization going and we wanted to be a part of that.
But why only Chehalis? You guys should have more than one choice. You know, if Chehalis has a proposal, yay. But Naperville, we really haven't investigated that and I don't think he's investigated like he did for the sewer guy and maybe a retired building person like Castle Rock uses. You know, there are other options and you five people should have more than one choice. You should have at least a panel of two or three. You don't build a house and only get one bid. You want to look at what, you know, what bill costs is. So why not two or three bids or other jurisdictions and say, you know, give me a proposal? I know he didn't like the person in Castle Rock, but what was the proposal?
I don't know.
Well, at the last meeting, we also discussed the option of advertising position.
Yeah, that was, that was discussed last meeting.
Has that gone any farther?
I don't have any information on that.
It's just a how we always look there when we ask a question.
And I would love to answer some of them.
Don't mean to put you in the hot seat.
So we need to follow up on...
Yeah, hopefully...
The advertising.
Hopefully we'll find out, find out more after we get ahold of this gentleman.
I think it'd be great to advertise for him. Maybe find some retired gentleman that just wants to work, you know, that has the credentials or whatever is necessary and just wants to work a few hours. I can't imagine it would be...
Well, it's working good for the sewer guy. That would have a retired man that, you know...
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that was a good idea from last week and I just don't know whatever happened with it. All right, any other discussion on that for now, right now?
I'm sure there's lots, Joe, but...
Well, no answers at the moment.
No, no answers.
Okay. Okay. So, item five, update on RVs as dwelling units. So in your packet, you have a letter from our city clerk saying that, that she did send our request to our attorney and we're still have not yet heard back from our attorney regarding the ideas that we had regarding the dwelling units.
Can I, can I voice a concern about these two...
Can I, can I voice a concern about these two mellows? See, we did that two weeks ago and we're not going to hear anything possibly until our next meeting, which is two more weeks. So, there's a month. It really scares me that our city attorney works on something for a month and charges us. Needed to share that with you.
I don't understand why we don't have attorney at the same time.
Well, we had put together a list of requests that we wanted in, in our ordinance along with a, a sample ordinance, right? Was it one from Toledo or Napavine?
I can't remember, but yes.
Does every ordinance then have to go to the attorney? We can't just...
If you want it to be solid and no holes that we can get sued, yeah, it needs to go to the attorney. Have a comment?
Yes, Mrs. Radcliffe.
Just as a comparison, the City of Toledo legal buildings, 3,500 last year, for the whole year. The city clerk over there writes the ordinances and she's confident enough in her ability that she does it, that it's not, it's not illegal the way that she writes it. We don't have to go to the attorney for every single thing. We don't need to spend $15,000 to $20,000 every year for an attorney and call them every time somebody turns around. This is not rocket science. You know, but we seem to do that. And if Winlock and Toledo and Castle Rock have so much less in attorney fees than we do, why are we special? Why are we spending that much money? And it's not, you know, it's our money. It's a cloud of sky. It's a free. I don't understand that. I don't understand why we're spending, you know, five times or 10 times. Last year was 10 times the amount of legal money that Winlock and Napavine, or not, Winlock and Toledo spent. Why are we spending so much money on attorneys? Anybody?
My feeling is that the City of Vader is under a heightened level of scrutiny from the state of Washington and we need to be sure that we have everything exactly the way it should be because of our history, because of our history.
And then when we're no longer under a high level of scrutiny?
I can't say. But that is my, that is my impression and that's why, that's why we do it this way. Get another comment?
I don't know the details for how much we pay for legal fees and how much we all don't know that. I'll give you that. But it is extraordinarily expensive to do something wrong now it is. And the mayor and the other people will be held responsible for it. And Vader has a reputation of the Wild West. We just do what we want. We don't need no stick in the regulations. And I think that's what you're always saying indirectly, that I think that's so haunting us. I don't like spending money any more than anybody else, I'm feeling something for it. But I pay insurance all the time for different things. And this is kind of like insurance, that we can sue the lawyer if the lawyer gets us in trouble. That's about the only logic I might add to it, so...
Right, yeah. The other cities are not having annual or biannual audits where the, where the state comes down and sits in our, and sits in our office and, and goes through with a fine tooth comb looking for everything that we've done wrong.
Which reminds me, when are they coming?
I, I think, didn't we put off the one, the audit until this next year? It was going to be this year, but we put it off for one more year.
Oh, no, that was not my understanding. It's in the budget and I think I questioned that.
Okay, maybe we're...
And they were supposed to be here in the spring, I was told, and spring is coming on.
I remember if, if something happened and we, and we pushed it off.
Do we need to do that?
We can follow, follow up on it. Well, we were going to try to do it early, I think, because we needed one more audit, one more successful audit without any findings. And we were going to do it early, but I think...
For some reason.
Yeah, I can't remember. I don't, I don't. Of course, it's written down someplace. I don't have it. Get another comment?
I didn't know Vader's reputation was that bad. I mean, what happened that was so horrible that the state has us under a microscope?
Well, we're still on 9 and 0 channel, aren't we?
It started with, with the utilities and the, and the water system. That's why how the county got ahold of the water system to begin with. And then we had unpaid bills. This was years, years and years and years ago. Right as the mayor was taking office, he found quite a few, quite a few issues, so...
Well, that's when Kathy left. Everybody knows that. And we all know what that was about.
And, and the city is, and it's still... The state, yeah, the, the state is still watching Vader because of all that. It lingers.
Yeah, that's no big secret. I mean, it was in all the newspapers.
Sure.
It's right out there.
Still here.
Okay. Didn't know we were that...
Well, I would like to just say that I'm probably going to have to state that I think we overuse the attorney. When, when I review the attorney's monthly billing, it's like out of, out of 25 days, there is 23 days that she's called, you know? And that goes on month after month after month. And I think we use excessive attorney fees. And that's, that's just a comment. I know it's not...
Well, it's not too surprising when the council's constantly working on new, new things, right? We've got the dwelling units. We've got the home-based businesses.
We just started those.
Right. But, but for example, you know, we're always trying to reinvent, invent something new. We're just, we're really active that way and so...
Go ahead and say it. I know you're... The courtesy letters. Well, the courtesy letters...
It's just, just for example. I'm not saying that it's bad. But we're just, I, I see us being very active and trying to make lots of changes and that takes... I understand that that takes some attorney time. Toledo will have a city, city council meeting and it lasts 30 minutes. We're here for two hours.
We have a lot to talk about, Joe.
Obviously.
Every meeting.
Every meeting, the same thing. I, I bet I can pull my council agenda for the last three months and this is the same agenda other than construction pay.
Back onto the topic of update on RVs as dwelling units. Did we want to discuss that anymore or are we just waiting, still waiting for the attorney? More discussion tonight?
I don't think there's any more to discuss until we see when the attorney comes over.
Because we pretty much all put our little...
Yeah, we had a whole list of, a wish list together, right?
Yeah, we put the things in the hat, same way with home-based business.
All right. So, then moving on, item six, update on home-based business regulations. In proper, there is yet another note saying that we are waiting for the attorney to get back to us. And that's the only update that I have on that.
So, we're all waiting?
Any, any other discussion on item six?
No.
No? Okay. So, moving on to voucher approval then, since we skipped that earlier. Do we have any emotion? All right, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers. We've already approved first half of July 2018 in the amount of $53,564.60. The end of July 2018, $128,143.85 for a total, July 2018, of $181,708.45. I made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second of the Ms. Costello. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the vouchers, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Public comment? Do we have anyone on public comment?
Joe, my name is Anna Valerie Reiman.
Oh, you did? Okay.
So, we'll let the recording know that Cindy Radcliffe has already made her comments and she does not speak now. And the second is Douglas Williams.
Douglas Williams, 626 D Street. I want to make a comment about the Fourth of July celebration, shall we call it, at the, at the school. I thought it was pretty well organized, wasn't it, perfect, was pretty well organized? And I think Mike Parsons did a heck of a job putting that on. And he did one thing that surprised me and that was drag out the dozen or so, two dozen hula hoops. I thought, boy, that's really dumb. But the kids just enjoyed the heck out of it. And I decided, well, maybe that's a pretty good idea after all. So, I, I give Mike Parsons a, a hearty thank you because I was one of the vendors there who just allowed me to, to sell my, my items.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. I like your mustards, by the way.
I don't have any more. I got different ones.
All right, next. That was, that was the last public comment?
Yes, that's the last public comment.
The last, the first and the last. All right. We have reached the end of the agenda. And the time is 6:42 PM. Meeting adjourned.